Okay, thank you, Mark. I got ahead of myself. So, we are back in public session after an executive session concerning personnel. And the next thing on our agenda is awards and recognitions. Ms. Kirby?
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to celebrate the staff members, students, and volunteers who dedicated their summer break to servicing students at this year's second Tiger Camp, Tiger Club Pre-Camp, 21st Century Summer Adventure Camp, and the secondary summer programs. So just like last summer, we were very, very busy at the high school. Everyone put in great time and effort in preparing for camp and making sure our students had everything that they needed, and I love that we had a variety of things that were offered for a variety of different grade levels. But I really celebrate the staff for showing up every day early, because it was not a late starting day. You know, right, you know, a couple of weeks after school let out, and I know folks needed a break, but we had a dedicated core of people who provided this opportunity for students. When I visited Tiger Camp, the kids were having fun. They were on the field. They were in the pool. They were at lunch. And you just could really see the difference having an opportunity to have both that academic experience but also fun made for them. And none of this happens quickly or easily. It takes a lot of collective effort on a lot of, a lot of people. So, I do want to call some of the recipients who are here up. I'm going to call the names of those who helped us get Tiger Camp going. And if I call your name, please come up. And then, oh, before, before that, our communications department prepared a short video of Tiger Camp Part II. So again, thank you all for your commitment to students. I have to give Bob Swaggart a special shout-out for being our lead coordinator for a second year. And though she could not make it, Yvonne Wallace as well, who was the captain of Tiger Camp, let me just say, running it all. So, so those other folks, if you are here, please come up so we can get a group photo. Vanessa Bantam, Carla Campbell, Danielle Farin, Angela Freeman, Lynn Gaines, Felicia Goodson, Erin Hanna, Karen Hansen, Erin Hill, Michelle James, Gerard Johnson, Megan Kennedy, Doris Mapson, Megan McMahon, Nancy Pepler, Anjuli Rosedale, Scott Smith, Bob Swaggart, Barb Tabak, Yvonne Wallace, Cheryl Walton, and Ricky Waters. All right, let's take them. I also want to note that we had many community partners who facilitated sessions for our students. Those partners include Heights Libraries, Reaching Heights, Lake Erie Inc., D-UP Basketball Academy, 1209 Fitness with Anthony Moses, Bike Safety with Alice Stratton, Garrity Pizza Oven with Steve Warner, Upcycle Parts Shop, Mojuba Dance with Aaron Weaver, Metro Parks, North Chagrin Nature Center, Heights United Soccer Academy with Sean Sullivan, Cleveland Heights Community Center Ice Rink, Rhythmic Artistry with Mary Thomas, Cleveland Kids Book Bank, and Heights Tiger Sharks Coach Dan Booton, and the 16 high school swim team members who served as swim lesson facilitators and lifeguards. Their names are on the screen. This was truly a community effort, and we appreciate all who gave their time and talent to this great opportunity for students. So, thank you. And I know we have Lake Erie Inc. is going to talk a little bit later. So, thank you all. That concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Next, we have two requested audiences. The first is Mayor Brennan from the City of University Heights.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, President Lewis, Superintendent Kirby, members of the school board, and members of the community. It's a pleasure always to be here and to have an opportunity to speak. So, I'll get right to it. In April of 2021, the City of University Heights engaged GPD group to perform a site due diligence on the proposed redevelopment of the city center complex at 2300 Warrensville Center Road. The city buildings included in the study included the University Heights City Hall, a police station, fire station, the service department. A new city hall would have, would house several functions: administration, finance, civic engagement, and special projects, as it currently does, together with the building department, the housing and community development department, and the economic development department, all of which are currently housed outside of the city hall due to lack of space. A new city hall might also have space for senior services and the community space and rooms, potential for a community center, or at least some of the features associated with one. Now, GPD finalized its report in June, just a little over a month ago. It's a 746-page report, so I'm not going to go over all the findings here tonight, I promise you. But a crucial and significant finding, though, is the following finding, following observation finding. I'm going to go ahead and just read this, so bear with me. Together with the physical condition survey, the space needs analysis confirms that the existing municipal campus does not have potential to maintain effective economic and operational usage as an administration complex for the City of University Heights. The size and extent of the existing parcels owned by the city would severely restrict redevelopment of the municipal campus in its present form, although the suitability of soil conditions, in the absence of any serious environmental conditions, would not inhibit such redevelopment. Stormwater management would optimally be located underground, such as below parking lots and driveways, so as not to involve the dedication of a considerable site area as would be required for surfaced detention in a pond or ponds. It is recognized that ideally, city hall, fire, and police would ideally be located at the current location. And because of its size requirements and use, the service department is a suitable candidate for relocation. Additional property should be acquired for a comprehensive redevelopment. So, with the city's needs ascertained and stated, as in this report, the city is now in a position where it must identify the site or sites for new municipal facilities. In order to move ahead to the design phase, the site or sites must be determined. We cannot design for a site that is undetermined. In following the recommendation of the study, the city is seeking a location separate from 2300 Warrensville Center Road to build a new service department. As a matter of priorities, it may well be the first new buildings to be built, as moving the service department will allow room to stage and build the new police, new fire, and new city hall buildings. So, I am here today to request certain land from the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District, here at the former, well, next door at the former Wiley Middle School. This would be the easternmost portion of the property beyond the Bus Depot currently under construction. The purpose of this land would be to build the new service department for the City of University Heights. Now, I'm attempting to share, and it is not sharing. Okay, well, I do have some printouts. It's good to be low-tech in the...
Sometimes.
In, in, in the backup, anyway. So, I'm happy to, if I may approach, I will present.
We don't bite, not very often.
Maybe it's the courtroom experience I've been through.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So, unfortunately, I'm not able to share, but I have distributed and am happy to share with anybody who would ask further. And I understand, I think George has left to make some more copies. This is, this is a, before we had proceeded, you know, before proceeding with the construction of the new Bus Depot, which is now underway, you know, the school district undertook its due diligence and selected the former Wiley property as the best and truly only feasible option for the Bus Depot. And while the school district had the full area of the district's footprint, and even a little bit outside of it, that it looked around for alternatives, the City of University Heights is really only looking within the 1.84 square miles, which is University Heights proper. University Heights is essentially fully built out, and options are few. Now, the course of our city's due diligence need study coincided in part with the time when the school district's planning for the new Bus Depot here at Wiley was going on. So, we asked our consultants at GPD to look at the then-proposed site plan for the Bus Depot, which has ultimately proceeded to study whether the new service department, with the size and features recommended, would fit next to the Bus Depot. And what I've passed out is, and intended to have up on the screen, is the result of that request, which was performed a few months ago. I want to be clear that this is not a conceptual drawing of what a new service yard would look like. I don't want anybody to look at that and think, oh, you shouldn't place it there, or you shouldn't have the parking spaces there. What this is only intended to demonstrate is that the square footage is recommended for the facilities from the study that was just finalized, and whether they would fit within the land east of the new Bus Depot and south of Purvis Park, whether they would fit. And what we have learned and what we understand is that, yes, it would fit. So, looking at the site, vehicles and equipment would be fully garaged, administrative offices for the department would be on the site, maintenance and Wash Bay Area storage and shop, together with employee and visitor parking, and something that has eluded this city for some time, a site for a proper salt barn. As you know, University Heights has no industry or areas that are zoned industrial. The Bus Depot exists in a U1 zone, permitted as an educational use. And incidentally, the current city service yard also exists in a U1 zone. Fundamentally, both of these uses are nonetheless light industrial use, permissible on the Wiley site. As a matter of planning, having the only other light industrial use in the city, that of the operation of a municipal service yard adjacent to the new Bus Depot, consolidates all the light industrial use here in University Heights to one area of the city. Even now, our service department and our municipal fleet use the fueling station maintained by the school district here at Wiley. The ongoing operation of the fuel pumps and the bus service garage at Wiley, both during and since the undertaking of the Heights High School and Roxboro-Monticello middle school construction projects, were among the reasons for establishing, re-establishing the Bus Depot at Wiley. And much of the city fleet is the service vehicles that we would propose moving with the department to the site, fully garaged, as they are not currently, making for a tidy and modern site for the service department here in University Heights. The Wiley site is a public asset owned and held by the school district. The city and the school district serve many of the same constituents. Public money has already paid for this land, and the use that the city proposes is a public use for the benefit of our shared constituents. So, my ask of the school district this evening is that it allow and approve the city engaging at our expense, a surveyor, to determine precisely the area needed, so that the city may propose a lot split, so that the land the city needs for the new service yard may be transferred by the school district to the city. The city would also need, and thus also seeks, easement rights for ingress and egress, essentially same or similar routes to what we currently use, or what we were using before the construction began on the Bus Depots, to enter the property, loop around by the gas pumps, and be able to exit. And with this land, the city intends to make permanent improvements at the city's costs. Thus, our ask for a lot split and transfer is the simplest way to effectuate finalizing a site for the new service department, which is the critical next step in our community for designing and building new municipal facilities here in University Heights. Thank you, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct that consolidating all of the light industrial use for both the municipality and the school district in one place makes a certain amount of sense in terms of, you know, minimizing the disruption to residential neighborhoods which surround us, right? Because it's all residential as soon as you leave Wiley. You talked about means egress, entrance and egress. We are, we have reestablished the main loop, so that buses will be coming, well, no, actually, the, George is going to correct me, because I'm about to get this wrong, right? Mr. Petcak? The buses are going to come in, they're going out onto Cedar directly. Where are they coming in?
Trying to keep them in, coming in on this side for future...
So, they'll come in on, from Cedar or on the north side of Miramar Boulevard?
They'll come in from...
Okay, on the north drive.
Wiley's being reused.
Right.
The easiest way to come in is right...
Is to come in on the south driveway. Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
So, would, would, would the University Heights equipment be using the same egress and exit?
That, that would be my thought.
Okay.
And if you are changing...
Whatever it is, it would be the same for both?
Yes. If you're changing the loop, then, then, if it's suitable for your buses, then I'm sure it'll be suitable for our trucks.
Right, okay. Mr. Petcak will also attest that covering your equipment makes it last longer, and that's a good thing for your investment in trucks and other things with wheels. And that's something that we, as a district, have been talking about, like, you know, can we get canopies over our buses, because it makes a difference to their longevity?
Too many of, too much of our equipment is currently uncovered, not just in the service department, but also in our police department. And with the exception of...
Yeah, I've seen your yard.
Yes. So, and that is something that is a, there, there's been some, you know, debate back and forth on the police side with respect to what all is needed there. But with regard to the service department, it is our intention to, to cover all of that equipment.
Which extends the life of the equipment, which is good for the taxpayers. So, right, no, no quibbles there. Okay. There are, I believe, a multitude of ways in which this could be implemented. You are proposing a lot split and transfer because...
It's simple. There are other ways we could do it, and we're certainly open to alternatives. But simplest way would be that. I would share the school district's concern or goal that, that the land be transferred for a public use, that, that, you know, I certainly would agree if the school district were to say, you know, we want to be sure that if you, we transfer this land to you, or convey, or however it's devised, that it would be for a public purpose, that we don't, that the city just don't, doesn't turn around and sell it for a housing development or something. That's not what we're seeking to do.
I would have to come and jump up and down on your desk.
I'm sure you would, as you should, you know. And the idea here is not to do that. So, so if, you know, if there were, you know, restrictions put in place, or, or, you know, however we want the terms to be to, you know, ensure that, that, that the use is appropriate. And this is our intended use.
And the last thought that occurred to me is, Purvis Pool is right there.
Yes.
The school district has received a little bit of grief about the school buses being next to the pool, after they weren't for a while. But of course, they used to be next to the pool. So, we are restoring what was, and in our, you know, intentions to restore better than it was before, right? I mean, because you always try to improve things as you go along. Do you anticipate this being a problem with being so close to the swimming pool?
No, I don't.
Okay, good.
I mean, there is some screening already. If additional screening were, were needed, we could work on that. And again, this particular concept was more an exercise of whether it would fit, not, not the final design.
Right, the layout would obviously be whatever is best.
Right. And, and being mindful of, of the pool and its uses, and being mindful of the residential neighbors who, whose backyards abut the property. We want to be mindful of that with regard, bless you, with regard to any design that, that we would ultimately do.
Do you have any questions or thoughts, Beverly, Jody?
No, the salt barn, that would just be for University Heights, right, not share with other...
That, we could, we could discuss that. The, because Cleveland Heights currently has, in the Noble neighborhood, a rather large salt barn. University Heights keeps about 1,800 tons of salt in that barn, because we don't have a salt barn in University Heights other than a small barn, small space, in our current service yard that holds about 400 tons, basically enough for two snowfalls in our city. You know, we may be in a position where, depending on capacity, we could work with the school district with regard to your salting needs. It, as Cleveland Heights explores what it will do ultimately with the Noble Service Yard, I don't know where that stands at the moment, but I know it's been a discussion with the Noble neighbors and among the Noble neighbors about the condition of that yard and, and, and what it adds or detracts from the Noble neighborhood. You know, University Heights wants to be sure that it has its, that it's not, you know, doesn't find itself without a place to put salt if Cleveland Heights changes or reconfigures substantially, as it probably will at some point, that, that particular service yard in the Noble neighborhood.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions. If, if at all possible, and if it, you know, meets with our staff needs, I would like to see us try and share that salt barn, just like we share the gas pumps, because that seems to make...
The diesel, right now.
Best sense, you know, best use. My other question is, I know we talked about the driveways, and we talked about the ingress and egress. Is there an intention, then, to remove the signs from Miramar that only direct traffic one way, the ones that were put up during the high school construction? And when this, you know, space was the temporary high school, I think those signs still exist. And would there be a desire, then, to remove those?
I haven't thought that far ahead. I think if, as we, as we determine what, what the ingress and egress would look like, I think all those things are on the table. If they're, if it's desirable to make that two-way, or make it one way or the other way, or some other pattern, I think we can work that out.
Okay. So, what are next steps?
I, I think our next step is simply that we have, you know, with your blessing, that the city go ahead and hire a surveyor to ascertain precisely what, what, what the proposed area would be. And, you know, we can then, or the lawyers can help us decide, you know, what form the transfer takes, you know, whether it's a fee simple transfer, whether it's something with reverts or restrictions, whether it's, it's a 100-year lease. You know, we're looking at making permanent improvements on it. So, you know, the easiest thing from our point of view is that it simply be a lot split and transfer. But I want to make sure that, that, you know, this is a public asset. We all want to make sure that we are responsible stewards of the, of the public assets. And, you know, so I, you know, am open to making sure that any concerns the school district has with regard to the transfer, and that it be used appropriately by the city, that, that's met.
It's unfortunate that Scott Gaynor isn't here, but he does deserve his vacation.
Of course.
I see no reason for the City of University Heights not to engage a surveyor in order to do the next step. And I think after that, we will need to make sure that our lawyers talk to your lawyers, so that everybody can be happy with what the correct next step after that would Because, again, this is public land. The taxpayers have already paid for it. It should be used for public use. The specifics of that public use obviously vary with time. Wiley has been a middle school, it's been a high school, it's been a middle school, it's been a bunch of things recently, as needed. So, this, this makes sense to me. I'll need to find out whether we need to have any specific votes on things. But in terms of, you know, if the next step is you hiring a surveyor, I don't see any reason for that not to happen. And then after that, we'll have to make sure that we're marching through the proper process.
Certainly.
I do have one more question. So, you are planning to, I mean, you're moving, your desire would be to move the service vehicles, and as we talked about, putting them, I'm assuming in a garage, not just under a canopy?
Correct.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to worry about smells, or rats, or anything, that, that all the equipment would be contained?
Right. I mean, currently, many of our service vehicles are too tall for the garage that we do have. And what happens is, is all week long, we have an employee that comes in a half hour early and starts all those diesel engines in the wintertime to get them warm enough to actually operate. And, you know, we're belching out, adding to the carbon footprint, you know, cold vehicles warming up, paying somebody every day to be there early to do that. And, and keeping those vehicles outside in the elements, which isn't good for the longevity of those vehicles. Ultimately, garaging those vehicles to preserve the vehicles, keep them warm, and also keep the, the site sightly, you know, to keep it clean and tidy, and, and to the extent that a garbage truck may have a certain smell, it's inside that building, and not outside, where, you know, people may smell it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from us? So, I think, I think you're good to proceed with the surveyor, and then we will make sure that everything else proceeds according to the right methodology. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Brennan.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the time this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have Amy Rosenbluth, the Executive Director of Lake Erie Inc. Oh, sorry.
Good evening, Superintendent Kirby and President Lewis.
Can you speak a bit closer to the mic? Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Superintendent Kirby and President Lewis, and members of the school board. We are really happy to be here tonight, and we thank you for having us here. We are not here to ask for anything. No, no, no. We just, we are excited to give you an update and just kind of share a little bit of joy in what we've been doing. And we're going to start with one particular thing. And we're going to start with one particular thing. You want to start?
I write because it's fun and you can express yourself. I can express how I feel, like happy and silly and mad. It takes my mind off stress, lets me get my creative ideas out.
It's a tool that I will need, not only in school, but I will have to use it for the rest of my life. I write because to be free. Please list one or two things you learned in this program. How to connect with other people and get better ideas.
How to catch attention better and how to express myself through writing.
I learned how to be more positive. This program taught me not to be afraid, to stand in front of people and do something I may love in the future. So you all have those words, and there's more. We sort of always want to start like that because numbers are important and data is important, but really, the honesty and the change of heart and mind is what we're all about. Sharice Bailey is our program director, and she's just going to give you a few highlights from this past year.
Thank you, guys, hello. Before I begin, I do want to say tomorrow is my first year, complete full cycle with Lake Erie, Inc. And it's been such a privilege to be a part of Cleveland Heights, University Heights. I was not familiar with everything that went on from an outsider. And being inside of the school and learning the families, it's totally different than what you see as an outsider versus when you're embraced inside. So this is a snapshot of our program from June 2021 to May 2022. We serviced, we had 448 hours of programming. We served over 1,000 students. We collaborated with 18 affiliated CHUH staff and their out-of-school time partners. We also provided program six out of the seven elementary schools, and we provided a full year of Ink Spot, which is one of our founding after-school programs at Noble Elementary in Monticello. And sitting here and looking at these goals, it's really exciting to see how our work aligns with what we're providing the students, their families. And definitely, with this research, well, our report, one of the most exciting things for me is to see that we did not just provide one type of thing, but we did encompass family, social, emotional, academics, community, giving a voice to people who are unseen and giving voice to people who embody leadership. So I'm just really proud to be a part of Lake Erie, Inc. And then also just to service the scholars and families in Cleveland Heights and University Heights area.
And that's a really beautiful segue to our closing video. It's when you talk, when Sharice mentioned the kids who might not feel seen or heard. So let me see if I can do this, Mark said I can. Quick background, this is Maisha, and she is one of our high school students. So for, we have worked in the schools for the last 12 years, ever since our founding, and we've been offering poetry club and poetry programming for the high school teens that entire time in various forms. And this year was a hard year, as we know, and we had a core group of three kids who came. We started out monthly, and they wanted to meet weekly to write poetry. So this is one of our poets, and we were able to, maybe I'm doing this wrong. Nope, that's my beautiful, this was at City Hall for National Poetry Month. Oh, wait.
Did you share it?
Oh, no, sorry, I thought I did. The whole thing?
Mm-hmm. Tab.
Common things are happening.
Yep. And just.
Go down to the bottom there, click that.
Okay.
Congratulations on your one-year anniversary.
Think after this past couple of years, we would have all figured it out.
Just remember, it's all intuitive with Apple products, right?
Something's trying to happen here.
I don't know why it won't. See, it won't. It did it before.
Yeah, it did.
Let me try it one more time.
That's great, yeah. Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, see if you can email it.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. I don't know how to get to that link. Send to, but it's not, sorry. Uh.
It's much harder when you're a third, like, second grader.
Yeah, if you can do it, I can. It's C underscore. Yeah, I also have it on a jump drive. Can you plug it in?
I cannot for me.
Okay. You also have it on yours, but.
Will it work for me?
It won't. Okay.
Here, Amy, why don't you give me the jump drive?
Okay. It's worth it. That's okay. We can share one, maybe we can share the first. Want to read it?
Got it.
If I were in charge of the world by an anonymous seventh grader. If I were in charge of the world, I'd cancel Fortnite, homework, filthy rich people. If I were in charge of the world, I would be important. People would depend on me, people would notice me. If I were in charge of the world, you wouldn't have poor people or homelessness. If I were in charge of the world, life would be a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have no other statements from the audience. The next thing we have is the approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion to consider the consent agenda, please.
I motion we consider the consent agenda.
Second.
Will you take the roll, please, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Rainey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes. Do we have any comments or questions about the consent agenda?
I just want to say that I am pleased to see that the field trip is coming back, the one to France, and I really hope that some of the other foreign language groups that had had to cancel their trips during COVID can bring theirs back as well. These are amazing opportunities for our students, and it's nice to see that coming back.
Yeah, I agree. And that, I hosted one of the reverse French students a few years back, even though my children didn't go on the trip, something happened. The whole, the whole process and experience of going to live with strangers in a strange country where you don't know the language as well as you should is incredibly enriching for our students. And they have the opportunity to do this at a high school level, which is, you know, most kids in this country don't get to do that. It's amazing, and it will change your life forever. So these sorts of things are incredibly valuable. I want to just do one little personal thing and welcome a good friend, Lenora Price Cruz, who will be joining our staff next year for the cosmetology program. She's a wonderful person, and I'm glad she's going to be helping with that classroom. And I know I'm not supposed to do that, but she's a good friend, so I'm happy. And other than that, we've already discussed how school buses now cost 15% or 17% more than they used to, and we hate it, but we have no choice. And that's all.
Did you have any comments about anything in the consent agenda? I think it's all pretty straightforward. So I need a motion to approve it.
I motion we approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
A second.
Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Wright?
Yes, Ms. Rainey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes. Okay, and moving on, Ms. Kirby, it's your turn.
All right. So I'm projecting superintendent's report, and this represents the month of July. We have a couple of things also from the end of June that I'll touch on. First, I'd like to share, definitely has been a summer of great professional learning for our staff. So towards the end of June, we had Dr. Gould and her team sponsor the Building Leadership Retreat and also the Principals Retreat. We're back today, actually, out on John Carroll campus doing equity training with building leaders. And then we'll have an additional Principals Beginning of the Year Retreat this week. In addition, many of our staff were trained in Avid over the summer at the Avid Summer Institute, but we have also had some in-district Avid sessions as well. Our work around supporting technology and instruction continued with summer training in getting Google certified. And then we also have teachers who've been working on curriculum and assessment and reviewing math, social studies, ELA, and health in particular. From the perspective of other goals in our strategic plan, we did hear a bit about Tiger Camp already. We concluded Tiger Camp, so it was over, it went fast, it felt like it went fast. We had about 400 students participate, and so the team is working on some data analysis, and we'll have additional information to share in terms of our outcomes for Tiger Camp. But again, just a really great opportunity for our students. As relates to our work with sex-based harassment, we continue to work on those different streams of work that I've been referencing in previous reports. Our curriculum team has met with teachers to review our new health curriculum. And that curriculum will include consent-based education, which was one of the recommendations coming out of the Root Cause Analysis Committee's work. We also had district leaders, we met with the Office of Student Protections in Chicago, from Chicago Public Schools. They've done very, very extensive training on Title IX with students, staff, community members, have some great lessons learned that they shared with us, and also some resources to help us as we launch our communication and training efforts. We want to have some training available on our website online, just that goes over the Title IX process. And Chicago Public Schools has some nice tools available. But also, as I said, interesting lessons learned and things to think about as we continue with this work. Our compliance officer interviews are taking place. So if you recall, we are going to be hiring a compliance officer for one year in order to not only conduct and lead the Title IX processes, but we also have other investigative processes coming out of HR that they will be leading as well. Dress code draft has been developed. Our first step is to, has been to share that with legal counsel so that they can take a first pass at that. And then I'll be sharing that draft out to get more comment from stakeholders on the dress code. And so I'll have more updates to share on that in, at our work session that's coming up. And then we have planned training on Title IX procedures that will be a part of our opening staff meetings. So we are going to make sure that these are prioritized on staff agendas, also on the agenda for the Principals Leaders Training as well. And we'll use our public schools work training as a foundational piece, but we'll do that training collectively as a group, which is a shift in how it has been done in the past. So as relates to the bus depot, we are on track to have that complete by the end of August. And you heard a bit about that as well from Mayor Brennan. And then through July, we concluded our meetings with principals and school leaders and department leaders, looking at either individual school outcomes or department outcomes tied to the strategic plan. So this is the cycle of continuous improvement that we use to make sure that we're making progress and are making needed adjustments to our strategies, aligns to the plan. So soon and very soon, in 22 days, we will have our first day of school, Tuesday, August 23rd. We will have the staggered start again, that is, that has been past practice. Soon, the calendars will be hitting mailboxes for our families as well. First day of preschool will be Tuesday, August 30th. And so at this link, and this will be in my report, you can find the At a Glance calendar and also the, a link to the WALL calendar as well. We also have launched the Communications Department, a back-to-school page with information for families as we get ready. So that concludes my report for the month of July.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby.
I have a couple of questions on the bus depot. So that's going to be done by the end of August, not before school starts. Come to the, come to the podium, George.
No, and it won't affect the beginning of school. The bus routes are already adjusted to make all that transition. And the buses, once the parking lot's actually done up there, they need the proper days for the concrete to cure, they have to do striping. And they're right now, they're struggling to try to work how to get that office relocated here. So that may not be here, but the drivers are comfortable next door at Wiley right now.
Okay, and then my other question is, then does that leave us enough time to do what we have to do at the other site? Because I know we have to do things there before we.
Definitely. The end of October, our lease is up, so we have, we'll have, in effect, two months to take care of that.
Okay, great, thank you.
I spoke to the mother of an elementary student and a high school student who were both, well, the mother was very excited about her daughter's participation in Tiger Camp, and her older daughter was very excited about Gear Up. She was wearing a Gear Up shirt, and I said, I know what you're doing. Things, you know, things are out in the community, and you can have conversations. People are excited about these specific initiatives, and that's wonderful.
We will be having a Gear Up work session, that'll be one of our topics for this year, so we can go deeper in that work and share all the work happening.
That's great, well, thank you. I don't have any specific things to report, except that I was gallivanting around in other countries, and COVID is still something to contend with. But we know that with proper vaccination, we can keep things under control pretty much. And so as we roll into the new school year, I am curious to find out how you want to approach things because we know that most of the world wishes this was all just in the rearview mirror, and it isn't quite.
Yeah, and we will be having an update from the Board of Health, I believe, later this week. And we'll use the same procedure we've used. And we'll use the same procedure we use in terms of working with our health advisor, Dr. Meyer, looking at the guidance and the information coming from the Board of Health. So what I've seen with, you know, we have a little history now. You know, rates tend to kind of go up and down. So you kind of have to see where you are or what date that represents as we get close to the beginning of school too as well.
And I assume we're doing all the things that we've, we're previously doing with HVAC systems as far as keeping the dampers open and all the air exchanges that, you know, it's, I think it's a new air exchange once per hour or whatever.
Yeah, we've.
Whatever we were doing before, right? We're continuing to do that? Okay, thank you. I'm looking at George, who's nodding yes, so thank you, thank you.
So then it becomes a combination of what is happening specifically in our buildings and what families are doing to protect their children and what we are doing to make sure that everybody receives their education. I mean, it's a balance.
Right. Yeah, that's why the conversation with the Board of Health is going to be important because I don't know if things, if they've changed even just kind of the way COVID has, you know, progressed, if it's changing and that, you know, new treatments that are available and new research and all that, if they've changed kind of their approach, you know.
Right, and the virus has obviously mutated to become much less virulent than it was early on in the pandemic. So everything, you know, the matrix is completely different.
Vaccinations are available for younger children now and.
For all children, yes. So any parent who hasn't yet gotten their children vaccinated, please consider vaccinating your children. It makes all the difference in the world. Okay, anything else? Do we have any committee reports? We were just a smidge dormant in July. We didn't have a work session. So some things that are on the regular calendar didn't happen. Did you have anything? No? You?
PTA Council is going to have a meet and greet at 7:30 on, hang on, August 18th. I'm not sure quite yet of the location, but I know PTA Council is starting to get organized. It's a great slate of people, so I think that they will be quite active this year. I will continue to be their board liaison unless anybody wants to make any changes on that, but I'm happy to continue doing it if you'd like me to.
Please.
And this is not a board committee report, but I'm happy to report that marching band camp started. So the first football game is coming up quickly.
Coming up soon.
Yeah, that is exciting. So school is starting. It's coming fast.
Reaching Heights is having their Board of Directors meeting next week on the 10th at 7 o'clock at Krista Hawthorne's house. And we have our work session on the 16th. And the most exciting time of the year for me, summer graduation is also on the 16th. So those students who needed a little bit of extra time to just finish up what they needed to do to get their diplomas, I don't know how many students we're expecting. We don't know yet.
I do know, we just discussed this. It just, the number escapes my brain, actually.
Some number of seniors will be graduating.
We actually just talked about this.
At the high school on Tuesday, the 16th. Eleven more kids. Okay, well, I'm very proud of them and their families are even more proud of them. And I'm looking forward to that because it's an excuse to celebrate their accomplishments. Yeah, that first football game, Friday, the 19th. That's coming up, August. Okay, really, really soon. And the high school PTSA is hosting a tailgate at 5:30 before the 7 o'clock game. So, and that actually brings me up a question that came up today. I wanted to ask you, Liz, if I could. Do we have currently any sort of process to offer discounted tickets to alums or senior citizens in the community to our events? For example, the first football game of the season.
I believe all of our proceeds go to athletics, so that would just be a conversation we would want to have with them in terms of.
Okay.
Offering something like that.
Because this came up in conversation with some other School Board presidents about how do we keep community members engaged in the district after their youngest child graduates? And one approach might be to consider giving discounts to the admission to games, concerts, shows, which are, you know, a great reason to come into a building if you don't have a child currently attending. So it was just, it came up and I thought, huh, I don't know what we do.
I know we had discussed also doing like a special recognition at a game for volunteers, district volunteers to maybe offer some free tickets there. So we can include that in that conversation.
Okay, terrific.
Question, location of the graduation?
Yeah, the high school.
At the high school in the auditorium, right?
Yep.
So there we go. Is there anything else I'm forgetting? Any new business? Any unfinished business? There's an infinite amount of unfinished business. Correspondence and announcements? Nope. Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Ms. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Rainey?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you very much and good night.
Good night.